Okay.
I'm gonna leave then. Okay. Well, the Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Ryan, could I please impose on you to take the roll call?
Absolutely. Chairman Roberts?
Here.
I am here. Clerk Hammer? He's not here. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, right here.
Commissioner Oracle? Commissioner Dean?
Commissioner Oracle is here. So I just, just so you know, J and G is George.
Commissioner Oracle, you still around? You can hear us and everything? We'll assume so. Commissioner Hamiki?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah.
Commissioner Viera, did he make it in?
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
Give him the benefit of the doubt. Commissioner Drake?
Here.
Dan Bruni?
Here.
Brooke Tovich?
Nope.
I thought so, alright.
Alright, so what's that, eight?
Yeah, so Oracle is here. Viera will be here, yep. Do we give him the benefit of the doubt?
Yeah. Alright, so I'll, I'll see if the two alternates save Drake and Pete and Bruni. And we'll have two, four, six, eight, nine, ten? One, two, three, four,
Ten when Viera gets in.
Okay. Alright, well, if he, if he gets here, we'll figure out what to do about the alternates. We have four separate public hearings tonight. The way we will handle this is that we'll open each public hearing. The applicant will make a presentation. Commission may have questions for the applicant based on the presentation. There may be some back and forth and questions. Once that portion of the public hearing is open, we will open it up to members of the public who wish to comment on the application. After everybody in the public who wishes to participate has asked their questions or made their comments, we will take it back to the applicant to respond to or amplify on anything that came up during the public comment. If at that point feels it has enough information to act on the application, we would close the public hearing and deliberate and vote on the matter. If after the back and forth with the public and additional information from the applicant, the commission feels that there are issues that remain to be addressed, or we don't have enough information to make a decision, we may continue the hearing to our next meeting, at which point the additional information would be provided, the additional conversations would occur and so forth. I think just for purposes of managing the public hearing, if you are either an applicant or a member of the public who is not participating in the application that we're discussing, I would just ask you to mute yourselves just so that we don't end up with extraneous dog barking and people eating ice cream and things like that. You know, when, when it is turn, your turn to, to present or to comment, you can unmute yourselves and, and we'll, we'll proceed at that point. So, first item, public hearing, application 2091-21Z Zahid Khan, 204 Salistine Highway, applying for a special permit in accordance with section 52B2 for use of property for a driving school and tax saw the applicant here early, earlier. If you could please identify yourself by name and address for the record and let us know what it is that you plan to do.
Hi, everybody. My name is Zahid Khan and address is a 204 Salistine Highway, Weathersfield, Connecticut, and I'm here to present my application that I'm planning to open a driving school in a plaza, in a ShopRite Plaza, and also I would like to do a tax, offer a tax services at the same time. I own a driving school in Manchester and I also own a Liberty Tax Office in Manchester as well. So, I'm not sure that, you know, this is my first meeting, so we already have Lee signed up with the Plaza. We already had the application processed to the DMV. We're waiting for it and all we're just waiting for your approval and so that town can give us a approval and then, you know, there's those people, people from the Plaza and the construction people, they can just start making some changes and do some updates on the proper address, whatever I'm opening the store, which is a 204 Salistine Highway, Weathersfield, Connecticut.
Okay, and that's where the barber shop used to be?
That's exactly, yep.
Okay. And in, just for the record, in our file, we have memo from Peter Gillespie dated September 16th indicating that the site's presently zoned general business, which permits educational institutions as well as automobile establishments. I don't know that this is an automobile establishment.
It's not automobile. It's gonna be a driving school. So, you know, we do have a vehicle, you know, for the driving students, but it's not a service with the automobile.
Okay. Would, would that car be there all the time, or would you take it home when you're not teaching people to drive?
Yes, usually we, you know, if it's a safe enough for me to leave the car over there, but since, you know, it's a, we are very close to the Hartford area, we will take it home. While we, the office is open, we'll leave the vehicles over there, but on the other times, we'll take the vehicles at home.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Hey, Rich, this is P. I'm just curious, how many cars are we talking about? One, two, 10?
We're talking about the two cars, the max.
Okay. And just explain to me, I was just curious, you're gonna run a dual operation, one is a school and the other is a tax office. How, how does that work and how does the flow of business between the two work?
Okay, the most probably, this is a driving school institution all year round, but what is that things that, you know, I, since I own our office, tax office, and my corporate office, which is a Liberty Tax in Virginia, they would like me to open an office in a Weathersfield, you know, another tax office. So what I did, I just have that option on my hand in case the corporate office will approve, so then I would be able to do the tax office also for only three month, which is like a three to four month from January 1st to the April 15th.
How many employees would you have for either the driving school or the tax office?
The driving school between the two and three and a one person for the tax office.
Okay.
Peter, I, I think I read that as far as parking is concerned, there's no issue here, right? Because that parking lot has a lot of vacancies, so I, I don't think that this use is gonna be at all a problem, right?
That's correct. Not an issue. As, as the occupancy of the shopping center changes, then we'll deal with those businesses as they come. There, there are a couple of businesses that we've been talking to who have an interest in being in there, but at this point, there's obviously plenty of parking, given the vacancies there now.
Okay.
Alright. Anyone else on the commission have questions for the applicant? I see George pretending to talk, but you're muted. You're still muted.
Tap on your face, George.
Anyone else while he's working on that?
This is Dave Drake. My personal opinion is it's a perfect spot for what he wants to do, so I don't have any issues at all.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have any questions because it's a really good use for this corner.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I have no questions.
Okay. Rich? George?
I just want to note that the hours apparently are from 10:00 in the morning till 7:00 PM. And Saturday would be from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. But that seven o'clock hour, is there any issues with lighting? Peter, is that side of the parking lot pretty well lit? And there is a lot of traffic flow going around that corner. Does that any concerns at all?
No, that, that, given obviously what I said before about the vacancies, there's, there's a whole side parking area on, on, on on the south side of the building and the shopping center has a full lighting system, so I, I don't, and, and they're, you know, so I don't, I don't anticipate any, any problems with that. Although I'll have to drive by at night sometime, make sure all the lights are fully, fully operational.
Okay. Anyone else? I don't know, George, you're muted if you're trying to ask questions.
The minutes won't be the same without George.
Minutes reflect. George said something.
George tried to say something.
I don't know how to resolve that.
Yeah, and I can't unmute.
You can mute people, but you can't unmute people.
Right, right. George, on your image, there's a, should be a blue box at the top where you can click on and unmute yourself. If that makes sense to you.
Or in the lower left picture of a microphone that you can click on.
Yeah, that works too. If you move your, your cursor, your mouse around, your cursor around on the screen, it'll activate it.
Or you can come over here.
Can drive over to Ryan's house.
You see a little microphone?
There we go.
Oh, there you go. Alright. Everybody's clapping for you. You got this.
Oh, now it's muted again.
Try and celebrate it too early.
You're muted again.
There you go, George. Don't touch anything.
Don't hit it. Don't touch anything. Don't touch anything.
Go now. Speak. Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep.
Good to go, George.
You, you want me to hit the mute?
No, no, no.
No.
Oh, you know what? I think he's, no, I think he's lagging. I think that's what's going on.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
I'm wondering if he's lagging. He's listening to us from like a minute ago.
You're there?
Yes.
I'm hearing you, fine. Mute. Down in the corner of the screen here.
Yeah.
And it says mute, and I I'll hit that.
No, we can hear you now.
No, he's, we're not talking to that George.
But you're good now. Alright.
Perhaps we should have him call in.
Yeah, my, my screen saying his bandwidth is low.
Yeah, so.
If he turns off video, he'll have a higher bandwidth.
He's lagging. If he turns off his video feed, usually that helps. Or just call him.
George, at the bottom, if you want to hit stop video, that might help so that we can hear you.
Yep. Now unmute.
Rich, can we go to public comments right now and then ring up George, see if we can help him out, and then come back to him or not?
Well, he, he's unmuted right this second, so let's just George. Yeah, I guess, is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this application? Don't hear anyone. He's down at the bottom.
Do we need him to approve this? We'll vote on it, what we're gonna do.
No, I'm just trying to be respectful of the fact that he's here and trying, but
I'm with it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at a certain point, I, I think we have to move on. Alright. Is there anyone else who has?
Rich, you just wanna put this on pause and come back to it? I mean, we got a few others.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have the same issue on everything.
Alright. Maybe over.
I mean, I may be wrong, but I think this one's uncontroversial enough that I think we can move it along. Anyone else? Any other members of the commission? Anybody in the public have any questions, comments? Not? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
I'll second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Peter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application submitted, as is, for the use of this property as a driving school and a tax office with the associated hours as designated in this application.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, motion by Peter, second by Viera. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close? Extensions? Motion carries. Okay, next one. Public hearing on application 2092-21Z, Joshua Tryon, 42 Crest Street, special permit in accordance with section 351B4 for the outside storage of a boat in a driveway. Is the applicant here? If so, could you please identify yourself by name and address for the record and tell us what you
This is Joshua and Diana Tryon at 42 Crest Street, Weathersfield.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. This is Josh, my wife Diana. We moved to 42 Crest Street at the end of February this year and have since been welcomed to the neighborhood by many of our neighbors. I've been a lifetime boater with my family and have owned a boat personally for 13 years. Two years ago, Diana and I upgraded from my old boat to buy our current one that's in the driveway because we could seen it, see owning it for a long time. We could see raising children on the water someday. Last year, I proposed Diana on the same boat, so we already have many great memories on the boat that we want to continue for a long time. This request is that during the boating season of May to October, we'd like to keep the boat in the rear corner of our paved driveway. A huge consideration when we bought our home on Crest Street was the proximity to the Weathersfield Cove, where we've always launched the boat, the majority of the time we go out, even prior to moving to the town. Unfortunately, there isn't enough room, we think, on the side of the house to properly store the boat and trailer there, and there's too great of a slope on that side of the yard. During the off-season, we will be able to store the boat in our garage because we hired a contractor at the beginning of this whole process to modify the garage so that the boat would fit. But getting in, getting it in there, after all that work, takes several hours to remove the rear platform and the trim tab so that the boat will fit. It also requires a few people to help us get it in there, so for the two of us to do that every time we go out weekly during the boating season, it would be next to impossible. With the boat parked in our driveway where we're requesting, we still have plenty of room for our two vehicles. We still have another parking spot free with our two vehicles and the boat in the driveway. And the boat doesn't impede our use of the garage at all. You can see in the meeting packet, we have highlighted where we're currently keeping the boat, and this is where the request reflects. It, it will always be covered with the mooring cover. It'll always be well maintained so as not to create an eyesore for our neighborhood and will always be parked neatly and tucked into that corner of the driveway. There have been a few comments from the three letters of disapproval that I'd like to speak to just for reference. The first is the comment that since we knew the boat couldn't fit in the side yard, we shouldn't have purchased the house. I'm sure as everyone knows, the housing market in late winter and spring, houses, if they were priced well, they were gone in two days. We did turn down even looking at a lot of a house, a lot of houses, if they had a small single car garage or a single lane driveway because we knew that wouldn't work well with having a boat and two cars. So, to that point, we did when looking at the house, think that the boat would work here. When we found this house, we measured the garage. We knew we could make it work at least for winter storage. With the house also having a wide driveway capable of fitting the boat and three cars, we never thought keeping the boat in our own driveway during the summer would have been an issue. Another reason for disapproval from two residents farther up the street are that the boat hasn't moved all summer. As I said earlier, we did get married on July 30th this year, and as you can imagine, we were completely tied up with all the planning and events around that, the honeymoon. We were gone most of the month of August for the honeymoon and family vacation, so that is a big reason that the boat sat more than during a normal year. I'm sure we all know that there was a record amount of rainfall and the Connecticut River was rendered useless due to the debris, the high water levels and all that. So, that's a big reason that the boat did sit more than normal. In regards to the statements about the boat being uncovered, it has only been uncovered during the day when I leave for work and I do cover it when I get back home. It's only been uncovered a few times this summer, and that's after some of this crazy rainfall, just to let it air out and dry out. So that's just part of us keeping the boat in good condition. Again, we, we don't want it to become an eyesore for the neighborhood. It may be that there's a misunderstanding on what covered meant. Maybe those neighbors think that meant a carport or something like that, but I just wanted to speak to that because a couple of residents mentioned that. One of the letters states that they are worried the boat will become a projectile, and I quote that during inclement weather. The boat and the trailer do weigh 6100 pounds, so her car will probably become a projectile long before the boat, so I just wanted to speak to that point. We do also keep the boat parked with four-wheel chocks on the tires, so for, for instance, with all the record with the weather we've had lately, it hasn't moved an inch during all that, so I don't want any, anyone to worry about that. For the neighbors that have spoken for us, 27 Crest Street, they wrote a letter and they said they can directly see the boat, and I did send over today a map that shows from the overhead which neighbors have sent their approval and they're circled. So, 27 Crest Street does have a direct view of our driveway and they are in approval of the boat, and they further stated that we keep our yard and home maintained, which in their words is an asset to the neighborhood. They, they go on to say that having the boat in the driveway does not detract from that, so I want that to be considered as well. In addition to 27 Crest, the approvals that we have signed that I sent over today include the neighbor directly across the street from us at 45 Crest, who has a full view of the boat from his front window. Directly next door to us at the right is 36 Crest, which the house, which is the house with the closest location to the boat. Directly behind us, sharing our rear property line at 53 Sunrise Terrace is an approval. Two houses to the left of us at 54 Crest, who has full view of the driveway, is an approval. 51 Crest diagonally across the street from us has a direct view of it and is an approval. And finally, 15 Crest, who is in, on the other side of the street, a few houses down, but has a direct view of the driveway, are also in approval. We, we do feel that the weight of those seven votes of approval from our most direct neighbors should be considered highly by the commission. It was important to us to make sure that our most directly affected neighbors approved of the boat in the driveway because as new neighbors, they've all made us feel so welcome here, so we, we want to continue that. When I had a minute to look through the email chain that was included in your packets from Mr. Chase to Mr. Gillespie and Mr. Morrison, that's in your packets, I do see Mr. Chase is the neighbor who originally reported the vote to zoning, and he's taken issue with many things on Crest over the years, such as our neighbors cleaning their RV on a weekend that wasn't acceptable to Mr. Chase or another neighbor using gravel that didn't match their asphalt. These are both included on page 25 of your packets. While I do appreciate neighbors that look out for the well-being of others, Mr. Chase's opinions as a resident of Westwood, I don't think should be, should outweigh the opinions of those residents directly around us. Our immediate neighbors have said that they, the ones that can see the boat right out of their front windows, say they have no issue with the boat in the spot that we're currently keeping in and that we are requesting for the permit for. In addition to the seven that have signed their approval, there are, the sign has been in our yard since September 10th, and there are 39 people that have not written to express disapproval. So in total, that's 39 out of the 42 residents that received the notification that don't have an issue with the boat in the driveway. We really want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission and want you to know that we want to make the boat work in our driveway in a way that's respectful to our neighbors. We pay taxes on the boat to the town, register the boat. The Town Parks and Rec gets our yearly launch membership fees for the use of the Cove, and we're gonna continue that for a long time. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for everyone on the call for, for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Rich, David Drake. I'm looking at the pictures. You, you can't fit that on the left side of your house?
The left side of the house between our property line and our direct neighbors is only 12 feet wide, and it's a slope 12 feet wide. So it, the boat itself on the trailer is 10 feet, and we have, we have rock on the side there. We have a brick path, a brick walkway. and we have, we have rock on the side there. We have a brick path, a brick walkway there. Um, so in addition to the slope and the barely amount of room wider than the boat, I feel like it would almost be sitting in our neighbor's yard if we park it there. Um, she is installing a fence there soon as well, so I, I feel like it would render the side of the yard useless if we park it there versus uh, the, the plenty of space that we have in the driveway for it.
Okay. Anyone else on the commission have questions?
Uh, yeah, just a quick question on the, when this boat will be in and out. I think if I remember correctly, you're going from May to October. Oh, it would be outside, correct?
Yes, May to October. Um, we, we like to get a, we like to make our season as long as possible, so we're usually out there as soon as it's warm enough. Um, so just to make sure that we cover the season, it's most years it's from May to October, yes.
Okay, so in November, uh, it looks big. I'm not sure how you're gonna fit that in the garage.
We've already test-fit it once and it just, it's a little too long with the platform and the trim tabs on, which is why we, we will be able to make it work for winter. Um, but it's just to do that every single time out, just the two of us would be too much.
Okay. Yeah, just following up on the, uh, Dave Drake's comment on that, on that side, did, did you consider all uh paving that side? Uh, I know it's tight. Uh, if you fix the slope and paved it, would it work?
It, it's a really tight fit um with having to back it in there um where and we'd have to drive over the grass on that side of the yard. So maybe if we made it a three-wide driveway, but I think that might be a little more unsightly than just having the boat in the, the current two-wide driveway. Um, space-wise, to your point, you know, it's, it's ten feet wide on the trailer. There's twelve feet technically there that you can see from the plot plan. But we'd probably have to modify our gutter-down pipes that come about two feet out. Um, we'd have to put a considerable, about a considerable amount of money into leveling it and paving it and then even then, we'd still have to drive over the grass to park it there. So I, I feel like with how wet Crest Street and maybe um, there's maybe not residents on here who can attest to how wet our yards get here on Crest Street, but um, I feel like it would ruin that side yard, having to constantly back the heavy boat and the truck over it to park it there.
Okay. Good, uh, good description. One last question. The coverage of the boat, is that that red drape that you have on there? What, what does covering mean?
It's, it, so um, it, I think the first picture shows that it's basically, there's a separate cover that goes over the front bow area of the boat that's watertight. And then there's a separate one that comes from the front window and goes all the way to the back of the boat.
So it's not like wrapped or anything, it's?
No, it's not. It's not wrapped. Um, it's, it's a snap cover, so.
Okay, yeah, I can see it now, yep. All right, understand, thank you.
I have a question, um, just regarding the, the stakes that you got. Looks like you got, I don't know if you put those stakes in yourself or you did like an A-two, are you anticipating like fencing thing or anything?
That, that's for the neighbor Spence to, to us. Um, that's the neighbor that has expressed they're perfectly fine with the boat in the driveway and the one that we don't want to get too close to the fence to uh, and, and have it between our two houses for, for it to be unsightly, unsightly for her. Um, those stakes she had put in um, in preparation for the fence that she's putting up. So I circled it. There's one picture, well, one, first picture, you can clearly see it.
Yep.
The other one I circled just so you can see farther back where the property line is there between the houses.
So driving up the road into the page on picture one, fence is gonna completely block basically the first story and the boat and the car.
Yep. That's a good point. I didn't think of that.
It'll be a short fence, right? Based on what we just recently approved?
Yeah, it is for her dog, so I don't know the details of whether it's changing.
Looks like we're going, oh, so it might be a, it could just be like a color.
Hey, hey, uh, this is David Drake. It's just a general ob- observation. I understand all your neighbors are for what you find and everything, but i- if, if we approve this thing, what do we do next week if, if like fifty people come in and want to put their boats in the driveways?
Well, I, I do.
That's my concern, you know?
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, I think it's still on a case-by-case basis. Someone has, someone can't put a forty-foot yacht in their driveway next week without the approval from their neighbors, just like we're doing. And if someone were to do that or were to put something run down in their driveway, yada, yada. Um, the neighbors still have the chance to say no because it's, you know, a, a monstrosity. I think we have shown that, you know, we take very good care of it um and all that and, and I think, you know, in this case, it isn't an eyesore in our opinion.
I won't let it become an eyesore because this is my first home. I'm so thrilled and I just want to be great neighbors and, I mean, sorry, I'm finally speaking, but I think the way we maintain it, the boat just looks, we will never let it, you know, get run down or anything. And I think that kind of separates different people who apply potentially is the quality of the situation.
Oh.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Here's the boat.
It's a two thousand seven.
Oh, seven, okay.
And the, the trailer is a two thousand fifteen.
Uh, I have, I have another question. Following up on Commissioner Drake's uh concern, wh- which is my concern as well is the idea of precedence here. Has, has this been done anywhere else? Uh, Peter, I mean, is this special permit uh, for storage of slightly oversized boat here? I guess it's five feet or three feet bigger than what's allowed by the regulations in the front versus the back. Have we done this before anywhere else in Weathersfield?
Uh, yes, um, you know, you've done this for boats, you've done this for some trailers and RVs. Um, um, I, I probably could have pulled together a list for you. I mean, it's not, um, it's not something you do all the time. I would say probably one a year, something like that. Um, maybe, maybe less sometimes, but uh you do get these and you do have provisions in your regulations that allow you on a case-by-case basis to do this. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily be concerned about precedent. Uh, each case is unique and you, you guys have to determine uh based on each individual request whether um, you know, there's other options available. So, um, so yeah, these are, these are all individual cases.
And i- if I, if I can say, if it helps the case of the permit, um, we can stay in the permit or modify it to say it's only for the size of the boat we have now. Uh, if there's any provisions in there that would help to uh, get this approved, we're more than willing to work with the commission.
It's good to hear that because that would have been another concern of mine. I mean, you know, you are a little bit bigger than what's allowed already and I, I think it's, it's okay to, to, to state that uh as well, you know, that your intention is not to go any bigger, basically.
Yeah, yeah, definitely wouldn't be any bigger.
Yeah, I, I think just to, to kind of clarify the, the point that Peter just made, i- it's not just the length, it's primarily the location. Um, you know, what's permitted is an eighteen-foot-long boat or RV or trailer or whatever behind the front line of the, of the house. So it's, you know, essentially the side yard or the, or the rear yard. This is both larger and in the front. Um, you know, as opposed to what would be permitted as of right and our practice in the past when we have approved these to be very specific on what is that, that we're approving, just so that, you know, tomorrow it's not a thirty-four-foot boat. Um,
Yeah.
That, that suddenly materializes in the same driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, we're perfectly fine with any of that wording being written in to the permit.
And we, we had done a, an application where we, we had it enclosed. Um, and I, you know, had like a gate on a fence and all that kind of stuff. And that's, I, I feel like, you know, that was, that was one scenario where there was actually room for it.
Was it on the side? Was it on the side?
Yeah, it was, it was along the side and, you know, this, this property doesn't necessarily allow that. So, you know, it is case by case. So when you get, um, you know, the next boat that's gonna come up and somebody says, well, you did this for this guy, this for this person, you know, it's not necessarily because of, it's just a boat in front of the house. It's like, you know, what can we do about it? Um, you know, that's just sort of throwing that out there, like where there are situations where you can do more and if we see that it's not necessarily like a cross-prohibitive measure, sure. But, you know, in this case, it looks like, you know, you'd be not allowing anybody, especially if a fence ever gets put up there, if, if it's an actual physical fence in the future, you wouldn't be able to go around the house on that side for, you know, most of the year.
Yeah.
Anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicant? George is unmuted.
I think I am.
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, I get concerned with our approving these at times. Approve the number of the most in the northern part of town. What are the serious issues? That, that I hope for our zoning enforcement.
George, we, George, we gotta figure out how to turn your video off.
Take care of. Video isn't on?
Turn your video off is what I, is what I'm asking you to do. Go down to the bottom. So the same place that you turned your, the, uh, that you unmuted, I want you to stop video. Yeah, you'll sound better if you do that. All right, now, now let's hear you talk.
That makes sense.
No, tur- turn it back off.
No.
Turn it off. Turn, turn your video off and we will be able to hear you fine. Now, now speak. Let's hear you.
That do it? No?
No.
It says, stop beating yo.
Yeah, hit stop. I did. Leave it off. And now leave it off. Be able to hear you.
Okay.
You're the best. Now you're good.
Now we just, can I continue with what I was saying?
Of course. Yeah, we can hear you much better now.
Oh, good, good, okay. Thank you. I, I was getting distortions on, on the overall video too tonight. Um, some. Anyway, uh, yeah, I, uh, I get concerned that we approve too many of these and not that we've gotten many in the last two or three years. Uh, we did get some prior to that, the last four or five years prior to that. Uh, this helps Peter understand a little bit. Um, they are ruining, uh, but, uh, it gets me concerned, everybody, if we approve these, are our regulations appropriate? Should we be looking at the size of boats that go in these areas? Improve it slightly or not? What do you think, Peter?
George, we, uh, we did that some years ago. We studied all the surrounding towns and I provided you guys with a, with a overview of that. So I'd be happy to dust that off and uh revisit that, but, um.
Okay, I hear you. But maybe if you want to send that out, I don't know.
Yeah, just, just to, uh, George, give me a second, just to follow up on what you said. Uh, as Chairman, uh, uh, Richard said that this is an issue of location and size, right? So yeah, to me, it, it really comes down to, are, are we going to allow boats in the front of properties, period? Uh, you know, obviously the size makes sense that we would control that. Uh, we wouldn't want anything obtrusive and it, it would, it would be something that we'd have to review. But the whole issue of having, you know, a vehicle stored for a period of time in the front yard is really what we have to decide. I- if we start to think about our regulations and are they appropriate?
Case by case.
Pe- Peter, all I was thinking of was are we afforded to off on the, what we allow or don't allow, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I was getting.
Well, let me, let me ask you, why is this case any different than anybody else, other than the fact he has a lot of nice neighbors?
No, I, no, I think, I think you're right. I mean, it, it's a question that we basically confront every time this comes around. Um, and frankly, I think the issue comes around every couple of years when there's an interest in enforcing the regulations. I don't think we've ever had anyone come in and said, oh my God, I need to get a special permit for my boat. I mean, it, it's, you know, invariably as a result of either complaints or enforcement, so, um, you know.
Or people know the rules and they buy a boat that's appropriate for the spot. I, I don't know. I'm just saying, you know. Next year, next year could be a thirty-foot boat on the same spot. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and, and we'll be, we'll be. Yeah. Well, I mean, and, and, you know, un- unfortunately, that's what the whole case-by-case basis, you know, depending on the topography, the, the alternatives, the shape of the neighborhood, the, you know, configuration of how the houses are laid out together, how the street flows, you know, all that sort of thing factors into it. I mean, we had that one on Jordan Lane where it was a corner lot. You know, and, and even though it was a corner lot, the guy was able to put up the fence that essentially blocks it. Um, you know, so that, that was how that one was handled, but, uh, you know, I, I think we, we probably shouldn't belabor the, you know, the underlying philosophical issue tonight. Um, you know, while we have other things on the agenda, but it, you know, absolutely understand that this is something that we've struggled with pretty much every time it comes around.
I agree, I agree with you, Rich.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, but it's a case-by-case basis, each, you know, and maybe they have neighbors that are really against it and it would be a different uh feeling here. You know, when you have everybody who is, you know, butts and whatnot, we can take the temperature of the neighbors and see how it goes.
So, so setting aside the underlying philosophical issue, uh, uh, Chairman, that, that you pointed out, and I, I think we'll have to deal with that at some point. If we look at this particular case, uh, in my opinion, uh, I think these applicants have done a pretty good job of describing uh, a well-controlled situation, especially if, you know, we had that this is, this is the maximum limit of boat, period. You know, it's gonna be this or smaller if you, if you buy another boat uh, that will be allowed. Uh, they do have a problem with this property. I mean, it's, it's a constraint. Uh, and most of the neighbors, the majority of the neighbors really had no issues. And some of the issues that were brought up, uh, you know, really don't really apply to, to the boat. I mean, there are issues of abandoned cars and messy uh situations in front yards. I don't think this is a messy situation.
No.
I, I think that this applicant, uh, in my opinion, has done their due diligence, uh, looked at this very carefully. And, uh, I would be in favor of approving this application with the stipulation that it's no bigger than the size boat that he has now.
Or maybe just the boat he has now.
Or, or maybe just the boat he has now, right? That's fine.
Oh, you know, you're gonna make him come back if he's gonna buy like the exact same boat, the exact same.
Oh, yeah, I think we should, to tell you the truth, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess just to kind of move this along before I open it up to the public, I just want to identify for the record that we've received uh, correspondence from Christina Buckley at twenty-seven Crest Street, uh, who is not opposed to this boat, um, that has issues with one of the other neighbors. Uh, William Chase, um, address isn't in this email who is in uh, opposition to it and also points out several other uh, opposition to it and also points out several other, um, situations in the neighborhood that, that he asked that she looked at by, uh, Mr. Morrison. Um, email from Anna List at thirty six Crest Street in favor of it. A letter from Cynthia Caligari and Gregory Caligari, fifty seven Crest Street. Um, in opposition saying it's parked there all the time. It's not covered the way it should be. It's not tucked in the back. And a letter from Lydia Cardella. It sixty Crest Street, um, indicating that they're opposed to it. Appreciation of property values in the neighborhood. Area problem already has issues with people parking vehicles on the grass. Um, and safety concerns. And that was the one that refers to the projectile. Um, Gene Blake, sixty nine Crest Street is not in favor. And the last one, I guess, was the correspondence from the applicant that they alluded to with the, um, with the map showing the various neighbors and signatures from, um, six of the uh, folks in the neighborhood who had no, no issue with it. Um, at this point, I would ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this application? Um, could you unmute yourself if there is anybody?
Hi folks, my name is Sal D'Agostino. I live directly behind the trions and my father lives directly across on Crest Street. I've got to tell you um, neither my father nor I or my sister Elizabeth, my father opposed to any of this. Um, I don't think that it is as detrimental as some of the people who have indicated in their, in their letters say it is. Uh, I think it's kept up very well. The property is always kept up impeccably. And I, I really don't see this as a huge issue. Um, there are some other issues on Crest Street. I'm aware of that. I'm not sure what the story is there and I don't want to point fingers at anybody else, but I just got, want to go on record as saying that, uh, like I said, I myself live directly behind, behind the trions. My father lives directly across and other, other, um, neighbors have, have asked me what this is all about and they said, oh yeah, we don't have a problem with that. That's not a big deal for us. So just wanted to go on record as saying that, um, and thank the commission for looking at this and watching out for our interests. But, uh, in, in my opinion, I really don't think this is a, is a big issue. They're a young couple near the neighborhood, which I believe what we want in Weathersfield. And if we can help them out with this, I really think that we should. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this application? Ask one more time, anybody in the public wanting to comment on this application? Okay, um, if not, are there any other questions from members of the commission or any other information that uh, the applicants would like to provide?
We're almost done here.
Tony, I, um, I'm reflecting back ten years ago when we did the ten year master plan. We had a public, public hearing over at the community center. We're a handful of people. Pretty aggressive on identifying the setbacks in front of homes and we have, I agree, Peter Gillespie, we have approved some of these, but we've really focused on those fences where the houses are set back maybe beyond the original setback of the subdivision. Um, and with other issues on Crest Street, I don't know what that means, but I think we've seen that over and over again, that there might be other issues in the area. I guess my question to you, Peter Gillespie is, can we put a two-year uh, approval on this, maybe to revisit it in two years, or is this something that follows the property?
Um, I think you could go either, either way. I think you have put time limits on similar, you know, permit applications and then you review them, um, when the two years is up and see if any of the terms and conditions have changed and making sure they comply with, uh, the intent, uh, of the approval. So that's certainly an option uh, available to you, uh, if, if you would like.
Yeah, I haven't driven the neighborhood, so that's why, you know, I would like to vote on it tonight, but I haven't, uh, I haven't seen the neighborhood in, in quite a while.
I, I support that. Yeah, I support that dude. Pull time for him. I'd be, be done.
All right. Anyone else from the commission have questions, comments? Any closing?
Mr. Chairman, I would just want to say to Tony, why haven't you been back to your old neighborhood? Seriously.
When I get there, George, I'll take you to lunch. You ready?
Yeah. That's enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, any, any, uh, final thoughts from the applicant before we close the hearing?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, if there's nothing else, uh, would someone like to make a motion to close the public here?
Uh, second.
All right, we'll say that was made by Peter, seconded by Ryan. Um, just because we have so many people here now, I actually have to pay attention to who's seated and seated, um.
I'm, I'm not.
All of the.
I was gonna say, Rich, I joined late, so I will sit this one out, this application.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it was all of the regular members here, so, um, since you made the motion to close the hearing, uh, Peter Lambrooney on this one and will not see David break. Um, so on the motion to close the hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye. Okay, closed. All right, hearing is closed. Um, does someone want to make a motion for purposes of starting discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just follow through with what I said earlier. I, I make a motion that we approve this application with, uh, two stipulations. The first stipulation is that the, the size of the boat, uh, which I believe is twenty-three feet, if I read the numbers here correctly, uh, will be the maximum limit allowed on this, uh, property in the front. Uh, and the second, uh, I, I, I think Tony has it right here. I, I think we should put a time limit and I'll just suggest two years.
Second.
All right, so the motion made by Peter, seconded by George to approve it. Um, as presented, it was May through October. A twenty, a boat not to exceed twenty-three feet and a time period of um, two years. So I guess that would mean running through October of twenty twenty-three, since this year's over. Yep. Okay. All right, is there any discussion?
Rich, can I make a comment even on the can't vote?
No.
Okay.
Any other, um, any other comments? Suggestions, questions?
Just to verify, this, this includes a stipulation that outside of, um, the boating season, this is, this is not, it's not stored in the, in the frontage. Yes, it'll, it'll be stored in our garage from November to April.
Just, just to make it, make it clear, maybe we should add that as a third condition.
Yeah, that's, 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 I mean.
We should and I accept it, Peter, if you want to make it.
Okay, I, I think, uh, let, let's add that as a third condition that the boat will be stored in the garage, uh, from November to April.
I'd rather go the other way around. That you can only do this from May through October. I mean, if they want to put it up in Bolton Notch, you know, or something like that.
Yeah.
This, this is just where, when it can be there, not where it has to be other times.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with Rich, because if they find, you know, down the road, they want to store the boat, boat elsewhere. I mean, doesn't matter where, where the boat is stored.
Yeah, fair enough. That, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so is everyone clear on what it is that, that we're voting on? All right, um, if there is no additional conversation, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Tom Dean is opposed. Uh, any abstentions? Okay, push and carries. Uh, next item, public hearing, application twenty ninety-three, twenty-one Z. Uh, Edwin H. May and Deborah W. May, eight oh two Prospect Street. Resubdivision, special permit and erosion and sediment control plan certification in accordance with section three point seven, three point nine and six point six for the resubdivision of the property into three lots, including a rear lot. And is there someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, members of the commission, uh, my name is Kevin Johnson with the engineering firm of Close Jensen and Miller. Um, Peter, if I could share my screen?
Yep, let me, um, let me do that. I'm gonna make you, um, co-host here. Okay, you should be able to do that now. There we go.
Okay, so I'm going to, uh, start with the Butters map, um, just a quick, uh, site orientation. Um, so this parcel is located, uh, at the southeast corner of, uh, Prospect Street in Bittersweet. Um, Bittersweet is to the left, uh, Prospect, uh, is to, uh, the top. Um, direction north is also to the top of the sheet. And Thorn Bush, uh, is to the right. Um, moving to, oh, well, and, and the other thing I'd like to just point out is that this is primarily a residential neighborhood and as you can see, there's existing residences surrounding this entire parcel. Um, so moving to the existing conditions plan. Um, so this parcel, uh, is currently a four point one nine, uh, acre site. Um, it's located in the AA residence zone. Uh, there is an existing residence, uh, and an accompanying garage, detached garage structure, uh, access to this existing residence is from Bittersweet. Um, portion of this site, uh, is, is wooded, uh, primarily, uh, to the west, uh, and, and closer to Prospect. Uh, there are, you know, individual stately trees and other landscaping. It's really a very nicely landscaped lot. Um, the topography generally flow, uh, slopes from, uh, Bittersweet to the east, uh, down, down towards Thorn Bush. Uh, and we have existing utility systems in both Bittersweet Hill, uh, and Prospect Street. Uh, utility systems in Bittersweet are, uh, subsurface. Um, moving to the resubdivision plan. Uh, so what the applicant is proposing, uh, is to, uh, subdivide, uh, the four point one nine acres, uh, into two additional lots. Uh, there would be a frontage lot, uh, off of Prospect, um, and there would be a rear lot with access off of, uh, Bittersweet Hill. Uh, the frontage lot on Prospect, uh, we refer to that as Lot Two. Um, it would contain approximately twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty plus or minus square feet, about a half an acre. Uh, whereas twenty thousand square feet is required by zoning. Uh, access to this lot would be provided by a driveway, uh, from Prospect. Uh, we align this driveway with an existing drive, uh, on the north side of Prospect. Uh, and we did provide a turnaround, uh, two-car garage, uh, appropriately sized, so cars can back out of either bay and, and exit to Prospect. Uh, in terms of the rear lot, uh, as I mentioned, that has access from uh, Bittersweet Hill. Uh, zoning requires for a rear lot, fifty thousand square feet, uh, we're providing, uh, approximately fifty-two thousand, uh, or one point one nine, uh, acres. Um, the access strip, uh, is thirty feet wide, uh, zoning requires a minimum of twenty-five, so we have additional five feet of width. Uh, we're proposing a twelve-foot wide drive as per Article three point nine regulations for rear lots. Um, we, we did consider, uh, in, 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 uh, design, uh, there is adequate uh, area that we could cut off a lot on, uh, Bittersweet Hill. It basically would be another frontage lot. Um, but we, after careful consideration and discussion with the owners, um, we did not feel that would be appropriate for the existing neighborhood. Um, we felt a rear lot setback, uh, with existing trees and buffers and so forth, uh, would be more appropriate, uh, in this setting. Um, we do have zoning tables, uh, for the two new lots, uh, we either, well, I, I believe we, we exceed, uh, in all cases, zoning requirements for, uh, frontage, uh, setbacks, coverage, uh, and so forth. Um, moving on to, uh, proposed grading and utilities, uh, plan. Uh, a- as I mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, the site topography generally slopes, uh, from the west to the east, uh, focusing on Lot Two, the frontage lot on Prospect first. Uh, we have a slight cut, uh, excavation on the west side of the house and then we have basically swales around the house, um, for, for storm drainage, uh, surface flow. Uh, basically that would flow to the east and we've located, uh, two infiltration basins. Uh, we did do soil testing, uh, la- late last fall. Uh, these basins have been appropriately sized, uh, for, for water, uh, quality and infiltration basins. Uh, we are including a infiltration trench in the bottom of the basin and we're also providing native plantings, uh, perennials and, and, uh, woody ornamental shrubs. Uh, so basically the purpose of these two basins is to mitigate, um, you know, surface runoff to the Butters to the east. Uh, in terms of utilities, uh, there is water, uh, sanitary, uh, gas, electric and so forth. In Prospect Street, uh, there is an existing sanitary lateral, um, that we're going to, uh, tie into, um. We did do a sightline analysis, uh, from this driveway, um, looking west or if you're in the driveway, looking left. Uh, that sightline is about one thousand, two hundred and forty-four feet. Uh, and looking to the right or looking to the east, that's approximately three hundred and twenty-nine, uh, feet. Um, we did do an analysis and it found that for a forty mile per hour uh, s- speed zone, which Prospect Street is, that those are appropriate, uh, sightlines. I, I will point out that Prospect is a state street, um, at the time of construction or, or prior to construction, uh, these plans would have to go to uh, the Connecticut Department of Transportation for an encroachment permit. Um, obviously we would have to restore pavement and you know, clear any vegetation, et cetera, that conduct might require, uh, but that, that's a step in the future. Um, in terms of the rear lot, um, this lot we call, uh, Lot Three. Uh, again, similar to Lot Two, uh, we have a slight. Uh, again, similar to Lot Two, uh, we have a slight cut, uh, on the west side of the house. Um, and then surface swales to direct surface stormwater, uh, around the structure, again, to two infiltration basins. Uh, again, with the infiltration trench. Similar plantings, the woody ornamentals, the perennials. The access drive, uh, from Bittersweet Hill. We have put turning templates, uh, on that, uh, radius as you enter from Bittersweet Hill. The zoning regulations for your rear lot require that that, uh, turn accommodate an SU thirty vehicle, which is generally the size of a fire vehicle. And once on-site, we need to be able to turn that fire apparatus around, uh, so that it can exit the site wi- without backing out. Um, the owners, obviously, did not want to have a sea of asphalt. Uh, we do have, i- this is a three-car garage with this house, uh, this house is, I will point out, slightly bigger uh, than the Prospect Street frontage lot. But again, a three-bay garage, uh, there's a turnaround, so any, uh, you know, private vehicles can turn around, drive out of the driveway, and the fire truck would pull in, turn to the left into the turnaround, then back up, uh, parallel to the garage, and then pull out. Uh, the the slightly shaded area, uh, being pointed to right now, uh, that's grass pavers, these are concrete paving blocks. These are, uh, precast structures, uh, manufactured for these purposes, so that, you know, the in- the 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 frame of the block is concrete and the centers are infill, um, you know, with soil and and can grow grass. So it it softens the look, so to speak, but it does provide a stable base, uh, for, uh, vehicle turnarounds. Water, uh, domestic water, telephone, electric, uh, that's going to be brought in, uh, from Bittersweet Hill. Uh, we are providing a new fire hydrant, uh, at Bittersweet in close proximity to the new site drive. Gas, uh, service, we're proposing, uh, eneasement across Lot One, or excuse me, Lot Two. That's the Prospect Street frontage lot. Um, and then sanitary sewer from the rear lot. There's an existing MDC sewer, uh, to the south, uh, this is basically in the abutting property, the arboreal property. Uh, we actually spent about six months working with MDC, uh, on this extending the easement and so forth. Uh, so the sanitary sewer, uh, will be connecting to that MDC system. In terms of erosion and sedimentation controls, uh, basically, the sites are ringed with silt fencing, uh, we have individual topsoil stockpiles on each lot. Uh, they're also individually ringed with, uh, silt fencing, again, to minimize any migration of soil particles, uh, down slope, uh, we have the stone construction entrance, uh, at Bittersweet Hill for the rear lot. As well as the one on Prospect Street for the frontage lot. Uh, we have the full erosion and sedimentation control narrative, uh, we have notations for seabed prep- preparation, uh, seeding mixture for all disturbed areas, uh, and so forth. So, we we are in receipt of staff comments, uh, we we did receive, uh, comments late last week. And we just received town engineer comments, uh, today, so, uh, we were not able to incorporate all these changes, uh, and get them back to staff, uh, for distribution to commission members for this evening. Uh, what I will say is, in terms of fire, uh, the fire marshal, uh, has no comments. He did endorse the plan and felt that, um, the turning radii and access for fire apparatus uh, is appropriately, uh, designed. Uh, planning, uh, comments, uh, they're really, I I would classify as very minor. Uh, we have no objections to any of those comments, uh, same with engineering, uh, we have no objections, uh, to any of those comments. Uh, the town engineer, uh, I I don't want to minimize the other comments, but I would say probably the most significant one. And we acknowledge this is that because of the trenching, uh, for water lines in Bittersweet Hill, uh, that the road, which was recently repaved, um, should be milled and overlaid. Um, and and restore that and any other, you know, damaged conditions back to, uh, original condition. And and we acknowledge, uh, that. So this is a special permit, uh, because of the rear lot. Um, so as I'm sure you're all familiar, uh, there are, um, nine or so criteria, uh, that have to be met for special permit. So I'll I'll just briefly go through these, um, and how we feel we we meet these conditions. Um, so Article eight point one, uh, suitable location. Uh, again, section three point nine on rear lots, purpose and intent of rear lots, uh, is to allow for development of larger interior lots which have excess lot size, uh, a- as I mentioned, this is a four point one acre total, uh, site parcel, um, the rear lot is actually going to be larger, uh, than the minimum requirements. Uh, again, we could have done a frontage lot on Bittersweet Hill, um, we did not feel a a home being located there with a forty-foot setback would be as appropriate as a rear lot, which is setback. Um, you know, within a wooded area and and with a house approximately three hundred feet back, um, from from, uh, Bittersweet Hill, so we we feel we have met that requirement of, you know, suitable location, considered alternatives, and we feel, you know, it's consistent with the neighborhood, uh, so eight point two neighborhood compatibility. Again, as I mentioned, the house is setback, the proposed house is setback, three hundred feet or so from, uh, Bittersweet Hill. Uh, I mentioned earlier, the setbacks, uh, are in excess of that required. Uh, just a quick summary, the frontage for an access strip is twenty-five feet, we're proposing forty-five feet. Uh, the front sat back sixty feet, we're proposing eighty side setbacks. Uh, fifteen one side, thirty the other, we're proposing forty-nine and one oh one feet. Uh, rear yard setback fifty feet, and we're proposing ninety-four feet. Building coverage, we could go to a maximum of twenty percent, and we're at approximately six point five percent with the proposed house. Um, we have had discussions with the owner, and we feel this house is probably fairly close to what would be built there. Overall dimensions of the house are about thirty by sixty, so that you're looking at a footprint of a house first level of about eighteen hundred square feet. Um, so again, we we feel, you know, these are not small houses, these are not inexpensive houses. Uh, you know, the the owner, uh, will be investing significant money in building a quality house, uh, and in building infrastructure, so we we feel we comply with the neighborhood compatibility. Article eight point three, uh, appropriate structures and landscaping, uh, I think I just touched on that. Again, it's an eighteen hundred square foot footprint, plus or minus with a three-car garage. We are leaving buffers and setbacks, uh, in in many areas in excess of what's required. Um, I will note, and as I noted originally in my earlier presentation, uh, the site is partially uh, cleared and open, grassed, uh, th- this part of the site, uh, is more wooded. But there are a lot of trees on this portion of the rear lot, um, which are either diseased or dying. Uh, I know an arborist has been consulted in the past on some of these trees, uh, some of them probably have, uh, you know, a shorter life. But, a- again, we we are leaving, uh, significant strips of vegetation. Uh, and and as I mentioned, on the east side of the house, uh, the downslope side, i- it's about a- almost a hundred feet to the property line, uh, to the house. Uh, so again, we we feel we comply with Article eight point three. Uh, eight point four, suitable access and parking. Bittersweet Hill and Prospect are both thirty-foot wide roads. Um, Lot Two, the Prospect Street frontage, uh, lot, a- again, as I mentioned, um, that driveway is aligned with a, an existing driveway across the street, uh, to the north. And we have provided a turnaround, uh, so vehicles will not be backing into Prospect Street, they will be pulling, uh, you know, straight out. Uh, as far as the rear lot, uh, Lot Three, again, that's a three-car garage. Uh, I mentioned we providing for the turnaround for the fire truck. The the passenger vehicles as well, uh, will be turning around in the turnaround and pulling out. The configuration and alignment of the intersection of the, uh, access drive with Bittersweet Hill allows for circulation and and access for an SU thirty vehicle. Uh, and again, that's required by Article three point nine eight, the, under the rear locks. And and again, as I mentioned, um, the fire marshal did endorse, uh, this plan and this design. And I I will mention, um, we we started looking at this design work al- almost a year ago now. And late last year, we did have early discussions and and, uh, virtual meeting with town staff, um, so we've incorporated a lot of staff's concerns right from, uh, the beginning with this overall design. So, Article eight point five, uh, overall circulation. Again, this is a one-family house with a twelve-foot wide drive, uh, there's no changes to the town streets, uh, that we're proposing to. Article eight point six, adequate public utilities, I I think I discussed the utilities that are available and where the proposed utilities are connecting into. We are, I I did mention on Bittersweet Hill, uh, we are adding a fire hydrant, uh, which will benefit the neighborhood. Um, and we're not, uh, connecting any storm drainage from the site to any existing town systems. As I mentioned, uh, you know, we're we're swaling surface water to infiltration basins and discharging roof leaders to pervious surfaces. Uh, eight point seven, uh, environmental protection and conservation. A- again, as I mentioned, we're preserving numerous trees and stately trees on Lot One, that's the remaining lot, eight oh two Prospect. Uh, we're also preserving buffers to the maximum extent possible, and in some cases beyond the minimums required, uh, on the rear lot. Uh, and and the frontage lot, uh, we're creating infiltration basins, we're adding native plantings. Uh, we're incorporating fescue seed mixtures, uh, which require less water than some other grass, uh, species. Uh, so we believe we comply with environmental protection and conservation. Uh, consistent with purposes, uh. So basically, um, y- you know, th- this is activity that will not have any detrimental effects on public health, safety, welfare, property values, et cetera. Uh, again, that we're not proposing any zone changes, what we're proposing is a single-family home, hou- houses on both lots. Uh, we're not going to overburden the utility infrastructure, uh, we're not proposing to change any zoning to a more intensive use. Uh, we are adding the inclusion of the fire hydrant, which demonstrates, in our opinion, that we're increasing public safety. Uh, so again, uh, we don't feel we're impacting the neighborhood or property values or, uh, so forth, uh, negatively. Uh, Article eight point nine, other considerations. Uh, eight point nine A, this has to do signage, uh, lighting, uh, we're not proposing uh, any signage other than what's required for the rear lots, that there be an identification sign at Bitter Sweet Hill, uh, which we intend to conform with and have notation on the plan and so forth. I'm not going to say there's not going to be any post-mounted luminaires or anything down. Uh, you know, there may be one midway, I I don't know, that's to be determined by the owners, uh, you know, in the future. But there'll probably be a, a, you know, residential post-mounted luminaire, uh, down close to the garage and and entry to the house. But beyond that, we're not proposing, uh, you know, Cobra arm, uh, you know, LED lighting and so forth. Uh, eight point nine B, uh, adequate landscaping, screening for abutting, uh, uses, a- again, I I've discussed that now, uh, the the trees that we're preserving, um, and in all likelihood, you know, the future homeowner is probably going to, you know, introduce more, uh, landscaping, uh, i- in the future. Eight point nine C, uh, the proposed development contains appropriate provision for pedestrians, bicyclists, uh, handicapped persons, uh, you know, provisions have been made for transit service. You know, the these primarily con- concern residential, commercial developments. We we have no handicap parking, no transit services proposed, a- again, this is residential. Eight point nine D, uh, this is a double A residence, uh, you know, a single-family house. Uh, i- it's not going to result in, uh, incompatibility, uh, with neighboring uses, uh, e- et cetera, uh, a- and it's not going to impair, uh, the vitality and character of the surrounding homes. Uh, eight point nine E, uh, the use will not have a negative impact on neighboring towns or on the region. Uh, again, uh, we're not close to, uh, Newington would be the closest town, uh, we're not even remotely close to the town line, um, so we feel we do not have any negative impact uh, regarding Article eight point nine. Um, I think at that point, that concludes my comments, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, George York.
Yes, George.
Uh, would would he address the letter to the commission from the neighbor? Well, happens to be a town official, I believe, too. Does he know what I'm talking about, Peter?
I I do, Peter, do you want to read that into the record first, or how do you want to handle that?
Now, how do you want to handle it, like? So I, it's all I want is handled, and I think you should answer some of it maybe, or the town staff, I don't know.
Well, I think the applicant should respond to it, but if, uh, I, just for the record, today at eleven fifty-six AM, we received, uh, an email from, uh, Mr. Morris Borey. Um, he is a resident, um, he lives on the island. He's the first house, uh, in the, on the island of Bittersweet Hill, so it's immediately across from the rear lot, uh, driveway. He lives at one one-two Bittersweet Hill, uh, I won't get into the the individual, uh, items, I'll let, I'll let the applicant representative respond, but it, I believe there were seven specific points that he was making in his, uh, correspondence, so I will, uh, leave it at that. Uh, a copy of, uh, this letter was forwarded to, uh, all of the commission members, uh, earlier today and is, um, i- in the record of, uh, our files.
Uh, Peter and, uh, Mr. Chairman, a question first?
Yeah, I mean, I I I was going to say, how about, how about we have the members of the commission ask questions, then I was going to introduce the, the correspondence and, you know, any other members of the public, at which point I think the applicant can respond to any or all of that, just to kind of follow our normal protocol rather than just go out of order for this one email.
Uh, yeah, if I could, uh, just as, uh, Mr. Johnson went through this, and having read that correspondence, uh, I I, he addressed many of those, for example, like the fire safety is where it was presented in one light in that correspondence. It was presented in one light in that correspondence, but when you listen to Mister Johnson with the turnaround. The turning radius off bitter street into the rear lot, talking about lots three. Then, when the Fire Marshal also went on to add. How the additional fire hydrant actually benefits the entire neighborhood. So it's actually contrary to a major component of. The questions brought up and fire trucks and and with the turning radius. In inside the box and off a bittersweet, but I think he addressed all those through his technical. Or the majority of those through his technical presentation. I mean, I was satisfied with it at that point. But just not to belabor, but I'll let others go ahead and go from there. Thanks.
Mister Chair, I have a question for the applicant. You indicated, Kevin, in your presentation that you had looked at potentially having a. I guess it was a the third lot being a frontage lot on Bittersweet Hill, and and I'd like to just follow up on that to understand. What what different ways, what would, you know, if there's one, that's fine, but if there's more than one, in what ways could you try to achieve? Three frontage lots without needing the special permit, what would those look like?
No, I I think what I was trying to. Convey was that in in lieu of a rear lot. We we looked at cutting a frontage lot with frontage on Bittersweet Hill. And instead of a rear lot, so you would have. Eight oh two Prospect, the existing home, the frontage lot on Prospect. And only one more lot. It wouldn't be three new lots. It would be a frontage lot on Bittersweet in lieu of the rear lot. But in that consideration, we felt in looking at the character of the neighborhood. The, you know, again, the the harmony of the neighborhood and so forth, we felt that. Even though technically. We could probably carve a lot out with frontage on Bittersweet Hill. That for that neighborhood, it really was not appropriate, and we could cite a house there with a forty foot building line. But we felt and the owners felt it would be more appropriate to go the route of a rear lot. With an access way. And again, preserve as much of eight oh two Prospect and the existing landscaping. So it's not, so it's not that we were looking for a Prospect Street lot, a rear lot. And another lot on Bittersweet.
When I said three lots, I'm including the existing house lot, so essentially you would you would still get two new lots, but. One of them would front on Prospect exactly as you have shown here. And now, and now the difference is on the, but but I guess just to follow up on that a little bit. You know, could could that be done where it's set back, you know, more than forty feet? And perhaps even set back into the general area, you know, that you have it, that you have it now. I don't know if that might require some modification of the proposed size of the existing house lot or not. But what what would prevent you from creating frontage with a driveway from Bittersweet and still having that? Second new house towards the back of the property.
Well, again, I I think it goes back to what the current owners of eight oh two Prospect want. I mean, again, they'd like to, I mean, that even though that wasn't an option. They they still would like to preserve as much of their existing property, you know, and again, it's a stately property. So that really, you know, even though we could physically do it. That that really, they felt would be more of a detriment. And and they'd rather preserve those those existing landscape features.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess just to to follow up on what what I think Joe was getting at is that you you could essentially draw. The property line kind of i- in the southern portion of eight oh two. You know, somewhere halfway between the the back of the existing house and where you have. The access way to the to the rear lot and you wouldn't even be dealing with special permit. I mean, it would just be, you know, basically a conforming lot, but it would be at. The expense of a whole lot of trees as well as, you know, the. Layout of eight oh two.
Yeah, I mean, we we looked at multiple scenarios, multiple lot lines and so forth. You know, I'm I'm not going to say there's only one way that you could subdivide this. We just felt. For what the owners, current owners of eight oh two Prospect are looking for. You know, and I mean, they're going to continue living there, that this was the most appropriate route. To go.
Mister Chairman. Can I? Yeah, just addressing this point. I live in a lot that, my house is four hundred and fifty feet back. And I have full frontage. And the whole front yard is maintained, you know, untouched. All I have is a long driveway. Seems to me that. I understand the point that the current owner doesn't want to give up more land. That that's that's clear, and that's probably the main reason here. This this is laid out the way it is. But it seems to me very similar to my own lot here in Old Weathersfield. I don't know what the frontage is on Bittersweet. You have, what, forty feet there? I mean, you double or triple that and just go back, and you don't have to touch any of the trees. You can still have exactly the same configuration you have now. The only difference would be that 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 the lot line would have to create. A frontage that's not special permit. Everything else would be the same. Of course, some of the land that that the current owner, you know, now wants to keep would have to go to that that third lot. And I'm not sure how what percent of of that lower corner would have to go to that third lot. In order to achieve, you know, frontage required for this for this area.
Probably a lot of it to get the buildable square.
And you'd have to strip out the whole front, and we would be really strip out that whole bitter street sweet frontage. Is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, again, I I would have to look at, you know, what the total impacts would be, but certainly it would impact. You know, a significant portion of that existing vegetation.
And let me ask you this question, Kevin, not to pay up, but if they made this lot, let's say, they could still cite the house where it is today. With if they just made a giant lot, correct?
Right, exactly.
Right, so it's just a giant lot that just blows up the whole neighborhood.
I I'm not sure that. A frontage that's that's. Consistent with the regulations would would really change much, other than cut out the lower corner there.
And Peter, it, this is George. Also brings. That that activity of the real lot, wherever it's going to be, closer to their swimming pool and privacy. In the existing house. Why they want it this way.
No, I fully understand the point that the current owner wants to maintain as much of his current property. That that's why we have this request. But, you know, I I do think there are alternatives that are workable. If the owner would be willing to give up some some more land.
If I could just comment. For for a couple of reasons. One, we've lived here since nineteen eighty four. Bought the house from my parents who were involved in the Bittersweet Hill subdivision. Our goal in the beginning, when we started with Close Jensen and Miller, was to minimize the impact on Bittersweet Hill. And in fact, we went to the abutting neighbors, including the gentleman who who wrote the letter. And we said our plan is to locate a house, set back to have minimal. Intrusion on the Bittersweet Hill circle. To the extent it would be the width of a driveway that's required. We'd maintain the the trees, the landscape, and the house would be set back. And if it's set back two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet. You know, the only sight that you will have from your lot, if you're the budding Arboreo lot. Or the gentleman across the street would be the driveway onto Bittersweet. So. That was as much in our minds in doing the design work with Close Jensen and Miller. You know, rather than to have just a, you know, a shocking property built on Bittersweet, that would be totally out of character. With our neighbors.
Yeah, excuse me, could you just, although I think we can all figure out who you are, could you just please identify?
I'm Edwin May, my wife Debbie, we we own the property at eight oh two Prospect Street. And we have been working with Kevin Johnson and Close Jensen and Miller for a year.
Thank you, I just wanted to.
I don't want to be, I don't want to belabor this point. I just want to make sure that people clearly understand what I'm saying. Setting a property line that gives you frontage does not require that house to move forward. You can still have all the trees there that you have now. You can still set that house way in the back. I mean, that's what I have essentially now in my house. And leave everything in the front the way it is. The only difference is that the lot lines would allow for, you know, legal frontage. Rather than than a flag lot. That's the only difference.
Peter, that would have been easy to do and accommodate the specifications. But in the same regard, a conservation easement could have been put on that. That strip widening all this, making it conforming and making it acceptable with relative ease. But if the owner doesn't need to do that, doesn't want to do that, and feels that these three car garage homes. I assume these are three thousand square foot homes accommodate or or complement the neighborhood and the marketability of the properties. And why do it, you know? Those are my thoughts. A conservation easement could have definitely satisfied all those issues if you if you needed to. I think, Kevin, what you're saying is that this is the best for the neighborhood, based on what your analysis of all going on the market value range.
We we felt this was the most appropriate design. You know, let's not lose sight of the fact, I mean, we do have in excess frontage for what's required for an access strip. I mean, per section three point nine of the zoning regs, you only need twenty five feet of frontage for an access strip. We're providing forty five feet.
Is there any issue with one oh nine's driveway being so close to that? I used to say the street like driveway for snow removal. Do you think?
Uh, one one oh nine being the Arboreos?
Yeah, it looks like it's they have a driveway section on the. Survey I'm looking at right up against the property line.
Yeah, I mean, they're probably separated by, you know, twenty feet, twenty five feet or so.
Shows a section going right up to the property line along that driveway.
This is this is David Drake. I could ask a quick question. The bitters, the Bittersweet Row neighborhood, I mean, I think there would be almost no impact. What about the guy from Thornbush in the back? How close, I I'm looking, I'm trying to look for maps. How close is are you building to the guy off of Thornbush? I mean, I see them being more impacted than anybody in Bittersweet. Well, they're pretty bad then. Well, not really, yeah, yeah.
And didn't you say it was a hundred feet from the lot line? I'm sorry.
We're about a hundred feet to the lot line. I'll I'll get you a dimension just.
Okay, so it's pretty far back then. Okay.
Yeah, what, so she's two of six that he has up there right now, you can you can see that. Probably it's closest to the, actually closest to the house number. Seven seventy nine on Prospect than than it is to anybody else.
So to. Number twenty five Thornbush from the Easterly property line is another hundred and eighty feet to the house. So from the rear lot proposed house, we've got about a hundred feet to the property line. And then there's another hundred and eighty feet to that house, so there's about two hundred and eighty feet.
So you got a good, yeah, so that's that's a good, I I tell you truth, if you're gonna add two lots, the way you're doing is probably. The nicest way to do it, be honest with you. I think, you know. Yeah, I I think it looks good.
Uh, you know, again, I I would just comment, you know, the rear lot, section three point nine of the zoning. You you know, the the regulations state the purpose and intent of this section is to allow for the development of larger interior lots. Which have excess lot size. I I mean, as I said, this is a four point one nine acre parcel. And and we're creating a rear lot. Of one point one nine acres in in excess of of even the minimum required for a rear lot. And and we're we're creating more frontage with the access way than required.
Hey, can can you go back to drawing five you just showed a minute ago? You there was a little, was there existing driveway for Arboreos right next door? Is that what that is?
Yeah, that's that's what I was pointing out. On the side of the garage.
There's a, there's a turnaround from the driveway that goes right to the property line. But the throat of the driveway is about twenty five feet away from the proposed drive.
And I was just worried about the conflict of two people throwing their snow in that small area.
Welcome to life in suburbia.
And and our 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 proposed driveway on the Arboreo side, we've got a ten foot. Call it no strip, swale, green space, then the twelve foot drive, and then nine feet on the other side, or eight feet on the other side. It's a total of thirty feet wide. So I think ten feet. You know, green space from from the proposed drive to that little turnaround. You know, is more than adequate for for snow storage.
Did the town engineer okay the drainage as proposed? Or is that going to come later? And we can't move on this tonight?
We we received comments. Or late to, well, I I want to say early afternoon from the town engineer. We we, as I mentioned earlier, we started work on this subdivision almost a year ago. We had a staff meeting, virtual meeting with staff, and I spoke individually with the town engineer last year regarding. Storm drainage and what our thoughts were. Basically, he endorsed what we're proposing. He had no technical comments with what we're designing.
The only reason I bring it up is because he's so particular these days, our town engineer on off lot drainage. And I think you cover it, but I was asking you if this in his comments to you. Did you notice he had any comments, or has he said what you propose in this real lot are fine?
He he had no specific comments regarding storm drainage. I I would think if he took objection to it, he would certainly comment.
I would think so. Okay, thank you.
A quick question on just a. A proposal such as this, is it? A net zero runoff kind of scenario that you would have, like, you know, with a with any other like sort of highway or, you know, other engineering project? Are you, are you allowed to discharge any more? You know, pre, post?
Uh, a- again, we're we're not proposing detention per se. I mean, these are water quality basins and infiltration basins. So the goal is to, you know, infiltrate as much into the ground and the same with the downspouts. I mean, in the existing condition, there's a certain amount of runoff that's going to go down slope. Again, we've certainly minimized and done what we feel we could.
I guess I'm just asking, like, I'm not like asking like a targeted question in any way. I'm just asking, are you? Are you required in any way to have like a net zero runoff?
Residential to my my understanding.
All right, just making sure.
Peter Gillespie, did we, did we receive the engineer's comments? Didn't see, don't remember seeing them, although we got a lot of emails.
Yeah, there were a bunch of neighbor comments and, and correspondence and went back and forth. Uh, it came in late today, I think it went to everybody but in the, uh, uh, chaos that was late, later today. I'm, I can't necessarily, uh, there, there are, um, I know Kevin received it. Uh, I've received it, there are a series of, let me just turn to the right page here.
There, there's a total of nineteen comments.
Right, um, I think Kevin had indicated early on, he has reviewed those, he has no objections to any of those being worked into the final, final plans. Just to speak to the drainage issue, these plans for both of these lots are conceptual. So I would feel, uh, more comfortable that, uh, there is a specific, uh, drainage, uh, condition uh, that would be satisfied at the time a building permit application is submitted at the time. A certificate of occupancy is issued for these two lots so that, uh, this proposed drainage scheme is maintained as it carries forward into the actual, uh, final plans for these individual lots. Uh, there were, I did receive some, um, phone calls, uh, and there's probably a few neighbors who are, uh, going to testify in a little bit. They had concerns about drainage, uh, impacting their property. So I, I think it just reinforces the need to have a condition, uh, on the drainage scheme, uh, that could be detailed at the, uh, at the more appropriate time when a building permit is issued.
So Peter, these are schematic locations of these buildings and and more detail becoming in the final approvals, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but they don't have to come to us.
Correct, it would be a staff level.
Oh, okay.
Town engineer, building inspector, zoning officer, myself.
Mr. Chairman, uh, can I just address the drainage a little bit here? Peter, you mentioned that there were neighbors maybe that are gonna speak, I read through this and I can't remember if it's this or the other one, there's so much information here. But I seem to recall that, at least in, in, in one application, this might have been the one that some neighbors were concerned with water getting into their basement, is this one?
This is the one, yes.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good for the engineer to kind of address that. I, I understand your point that, you know, there's runoff already from this property because it's sloped in a particular way naturally. And I can see that you're trying to mitigate, uh, through your grading and your infiltration areas here, you're trying to mitigate any transmission of excess water other than naturally occurs from these properties. Uh, can you address that a little bit more, the benefit of the people that have those concerns?
Uh, I, I, I'll perhaps at this point turn to, uh, my, my engineer, Chris Sabidio, uh, he, he was on site and did the percolation tests and designed the infiltration trenches and sized these, so perhaps he could add a little more information than I could.
Okay.
Chris, could you speak to the drainage, please?
Uh, sure, what we did.
Identify yourself for the record.
Chris Sabidio, Close Jensen and Miller. Uh, what we did was we worked with the town's low intensity development standards. Uh, conversation with, uh, Mr. Gregory, the town engineer, indicated, uh, that that's what he was looking for, which is to, in a nutshell, um, these drainage, uh, structures that we've created on these lots are intended to treat what would be known as one half of the normal water quality volume. So that's what we were looking at, and it's a matter of how much of the land is now impervious that was not before. And what the normal runoff factors would be, primarily a rational method calculation, and how to, um, treat that, uh, water quality volume as if it were a commercial, uh, property like the other gentleman referred to prior with the net runoff, uh, of zero. Uh, in a case of residential, we don't have to do a zero, we're looking for, uh, a fifty percent of the water quality volume, um, as recommended by other standards. So I'm not sure if I addressed the question you're asking because I haven't seen the comments that were, uh, asked. But if you have a comment in particular, you want.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, to clarify for people that have these concerns joining neighbors. Just said simply, I understand the technical terms because I'm an engineer myself, but just said simply, can you state that, given the impervious structures and pavement that you've added here, can you state that this plan really does not add any more flow on their property than it would have naturally have occurred without it, this building?
Yes, I think it does.
Okay, that, that, that's important, because people's concern is that, you know, there's more flow of water on their properties. And you've, you've taken steps to make sure that that doesn't occur, that's what I'm understanding here.
Correct.
Okay.
Good for you, Peter and Chris, that was a good discussion. And, uh, I think we have a better understanding and I hope the neighbors will eventually, so. And by the way, uh, Chris, you have a previous recent relationship with our town engineer, you think he will approve it?
Uh, well, we did address the concerns that he brought up in our first and second meetings. This was designed to his specification, so yes, I think he will.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Anyone else on the commission have any, um, other questions for the applicant before we turn it to the, to the public? Not, I, I guess. Who's that? Um, if not, I'll, I'll just mention that there were two pieces of correspondence, one that we've, well, I guess both that we have alluded to. Uh, one is, uh, an email from Leonard and Lucy Skinger, seventeen Thornbush Road. Um, they're the ones who specifically raised, having lived there, uh, for fifty-three years with no water problems. The landslips downhill from, to their, uh, area from Bittersweet and, um, you know, their biggest concern was having, um, you know, increased either amount, volume or flow of water into their finished basement, uh, as a result of the project. And the other one was, uh, an email from Morris Boria at one twelve Bittersweet Hill. Which is directly across from the driveway to the proposed rear lot. And he goes through section three point nine of the zoning regulations and takes issue with the number of the, um, you know, specific criteria being satisfied. You know, including the, uh, odd configuration of the driveway with inadequate ingress and egress and maneuverings. Um, the, the rear lot would not be in harmony with the development of the area. Um, the rear lot is likely to adversely affect property values in the neighborhood, um, both, um, in the process of the construction, um, by putting the trailer across from his house as well as digging up the road that has only recently been repaved after years of, um, neglect. Um, that the creation of the rear lot will diminish the value of the adjoining homes, uh, that the proposed rear lot does not provide for easy accessibility for fire apparatus and police protection, um, that will have detrimental effects on public convenience and property values and therefore is not consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And that the proposed rear lot does not contain adequate safeguards for the, uh, environment or adequate landscaping and screening for the abutting users so that, uh, um, in his opinion, it, it does not satisfy the special permit requirements of three point nine.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, does he imply in that letter that he understands that the property values will be reduced? And what basis does he make that? And, uh, you know, I, I don't know why he suggests that, doesn't appear that way to me, uh, the proposal. I, I don't understand what he's getting at with that one. Now, it sounds to me like he's getting ready for a lawsuit. But I don't, I hope he isn't.
Yeah. Um, are there any members of the, I guess if we could stop screen sharing so that we can, we can see people again, at least for the time being, that might be helpful.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Gonna do that, Peter?
Yeah, are, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this application? Um, Sherry Phillips, I see your physical hands being raised.
Yes, thank you, I live at, uh, bitter, uh, ninety-three Bittersweet Hill. And I just want to say after listening this evening, um, I applaud the design that the Mays have come up with. You, unless you've come through this neighborhood, you wouldn't understand that that corner does provide a lot of privacy. I don't agree unfortunately with Morris that, um, it will affect our property values. I think in this day and age, that housing, those lots being, um, it would increase actually our property values. And my only concern, and I, I know you probably have, saw Mr. Gillespie and he said this is usually already taken care of and I've never been on a meeting like this. But the road, as Morris pointed out, is new and we suffered through a horrible road like a lot of people have had to do for many years, and this is brand new. Is there a provision that would restore the road after construction to its current condition?
You would like us to put that in any approval if we make one?
Yes, sir, I would.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was led to believe like earlier conversation that that was in one of, uh, might have been one of the town engineer's comments that we haven't seen.
It, it, for the record, Kevin Johnson, it is one of Mr. Gregor's comments and, um, the Mays have agreed, uh, that that's a valid point and they will certainly restore the road to its original condition.
Thank you, thank you for all of your time tonight.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak on this application? Guess we wore them all out. Anyone else in the public wanting to speak on this application going once? Um, I guess one thing that, that's sort of lingering in, in my mind is, you know, the, quite often we've, we've approved applications, you know, subject to the comments of the town engineer. You know, here, you know, we don't, we don't know what they are, but the applicant has indicated that he's fine with them all, so I'm, I'm just kind of musing aloud as to whether we want to continue this or, or what?
We are in receipt of the comments, I'm, I'm looking at them right now. Like, again, there's nineteen comments. Do you want me to read them or into the record?
Um, yeah, I mean, I.
I, I, I don't know how you want to handle it, but, but again, as, as I said, um, you know, there's, there's total of nineteen comments, there's nothing really of great technical comments that's gonna change any of the design, a lot of it, in my opinion, is drafting or how he wants some of the sheets presented, uh, you know, revise a general note, identify catch basin tops, what type they are, label houses, label perimeter dimensions of proposed buildings. Um, add the following notes to the plans, tree warden notes, uh, anticipated start and completion dates. Add, uh, horizontal coordinates to existing conditions plan. It, it's, it's really drafting and it, it's nothing technical that, that affects the design or the layout. Um, the most significant one, in my opinion, uh, as I said earlier, not, not to, you know, minimize the other comments, but it, it's item number four. Bittersweet Hill was paved in twenty nineteen, therefore, per the town's pavement management policy, add a note stating that a two inch mill and overlay restoration will be required for the full road width to limits identified by the town, uh, if road pavement is impacted prior to twenty twenty-five. Um, I did discuss that, um, with the applicant and they're in agreement with that. If, if the commission so deems it to make it a condition or make all, all the, that we comply with all the engineer's comments. But really, it's, there's no comments, in my opinion, that affects the design or technical aspects or the drainage. It, it's, again, mostly in my opinion, it's drafting type things, corrections, notations.
Rich, I, I would concur, I would concur with that summary. There's only one other condition regarding maintenance of the infiltration trenches in the, in the stormwater basins. Um, that is, you know, is, is more than a drafting, um, modification, so that's the only other. Real concern is that there be an obligation for the property owners going forward to have a, have a note regarding maintenance of the, of that drainage.
And, and we acknowledge that, we're going to add a note to the plan.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, as Mr. Johnson said though, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Uh, your point that they want the road or the engineer suggested, uh, to mill the road. I mean, that, that's very specific how he wants to repair, that, that's more than, than a graphical comment. That's, that to me is a requirement, and, and I think you said that.
No, no, I, 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 I said, you know, the other comments are really drafting type ones, but not comment number four. I, I think I said number four was the most significant one.
Right, well, I, I would just want to be clear, number four is a condition, if, if the town engineer wants it milled and repaired in that manner, that, that's a condition that, that this commission needs, needs to make sure that we capture. That's my point.
Certainly, and, and we're gonna add that notation to the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I guess, I guess all, all I was trying to do was find out what those comments were because, um, you know, if, if we're, if we're being expected to act on this tonight, I didn't want to have one of our conditions be that, you know, um, the applicant comply with something we don't know what it is. Yeah, okay.
Um, Rich and, uh, and Peter, uh, this is another issue. And we've never done this, that I can ever recall, been on that commission a long time. Uh, do we, we don't need the tree warden to come out there and evaluate the trees that are proposed to be saved, do we? Or the ones that are going, I don't, I don't think that's needed, although it's the beautiful stuff on that site, I gotta admit.
No, if they were, if they were public trees, um, which they're not, they're private trees, then we would, that would be his jurisdiction, but, uh, no, they're, they're private trees.
Never required that of any applicant.
No, no.
While you've been around and I don't ever recall it being done, okay. Kevin, I would like them to take a look at that somehow though, as your engineering staff. I, I think you've done that, but you can ensure us that the trees that are being kept are okay and, uh, that kind of thing. That can be.
Yeah, we will certainly, uh, take that under consideration and, and, and do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, I, I guess, you know, we seem to be heading toward closing the hearing. I'll, I'll ask one more time, you know, whether there's anybody on the commission or any members of the public that have, uh, questions for the applicant, uh, at this point. All right, um, if not, Kevin, do you have any final wrap-up comments you'd like to make?
Um, not unless you want me to, again, go over the email, um, from the property owner at, uh, one twelve Bittersweet. Um, again, I, I think I covered a lot of these in my presentation when I went through, uh, the bullet points for special permit, um, but I, I'd be happy to go through them again. You know, number one from the email, um, you know, the, the first line, the proposed lot truly has no frontage on Bittersweet Hill. I mean, we're creating frontage, um, forty-five feet, where twenty-five is required by the regulations. Uh, it, it states that it's an odd configuration, inadequate ingress egress and space for maneuvering. I, I, we disagree. Uh, it does accommodate an SU thirty vehicle. Apparently, the town engineer and fire marshal agree. Um, the, the fire hydrant, uh, again, we're adding that, uh, on the south side of Bittersweet Hill. Um, number two, um, essentially asked whether this rear lot will be in harmony with the orderly development of the area. I, I think we've discussed that quite a bit. Um, I, I, I think we feel it, it certainly is more so than if we had created a frontage lot. Um, number three, the construction trailer, there's nothing in our plans, either in notations or graphics, that indicates there's going to be a construction trailer. I'm not sure where that came from. Um, the effect on the road, which was repaved, we just discussed that and are willing to agree to that item number four and Mr. Gregor's comments to repave. Um, cramming a rear lot into a very developed and well-maintained neighborhood. Uh, again, you, you know, you look at the, as I read the requirements of three point nine, um, the intent of, uh, you know, the rear lots is to allow the development of larger interior lots, which have excess lot size, which I, I, I totally think this fits the bill. Um, so I, I'm not really sure what cramming a rear lot means. Um, as for the house property value, um, not sure what basis. I, I'm, I'm not a Realtor. I, I'm not an assessor. Uh, my own personal opinion is, uh, it's probably going to increase property values. Uh, the, these are not, you know, small houses that are being proposed. Uh, and, and I believe I mentioned, you know, the owners of eight oh two Prospect, that they're investing a significant amount of money in new infrastructure and houses. They're, they're certainly not going to construct something out of context or character with that neighborhood. Um, and, and I think, you know, we've demonstrated that, working over the past year, working with staff and, and so forth, that, you know, they, they truly are cognizant of the neighbors, neighbors and neighborhood. Um, so number four, again, talks about diminishing the value of joining houses, safety risk, the lack of frontage, uh, or adequate ingress and egress. Again, we, I, I just spoke about that. I, you know, again, it, it's, the, the configuration of that access drive is very conducive to a, a fire apparatus or, or any vehicle entering that driveway. Um, it, it would be worse if, if you had a ninety-degree, uh, uh, you know, driveway intersecting Liberty or Bittersweet Hill, excuse me, and, and then turning. So, um, I, I, I'm not really sure, um, you know, the comments on the ingress and egress. Uh, number five, does not provide for easy accessibility for fire apparatus and police protection. Again, that kind of piggybacks on number four. Uh, number six, uh, detrimental effects upon the public convenience and property values of the neighborhood. We just talked about that. Um, objectives and policies of the plan of conservation and development. Um, section eight point eight of the regulations, I, I believe I went over that earlier. Um, number seven, proposed rear lot does not contain adequate safeguards and assurances that it will protect the environment in the area or have adequate landscaping and screening for the protection of abutting uses. Uh, a, a, again, you know, that where the rear lot is proposed, it, you know, I, I think years ago, it was, the, the wooded area is probably much more significant. Um, there are a lot of dead trees that have come down or are going to come down. Um, appears, you know, there was probably a microburst and trees came down. Um, so, a- again, as, as I say, we're, we're preserving a lot of the trees around the, the perimeter of the site, um, and, and there's nothing to preclude, you know, future owner from, you know, adding their own landscaping as well. Um, so, uh, I, I, I'm not really sure on some of these points what, what the thinking is, but I, I think we've discussed, uh, you know, the, the various points required by the special permit, so.
Wait till. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anything else before we close the hearing?
May I just say something?
Sure.
Is it appropriate time?
Yep.
Okay. I, I would, I'm Debbie May, um, one of the applicants. I would just like to say, we've lived here since nineteen eighty-three. Um, Ted's parents were here prior to that time, and I think over the time we've been here, we have gone out of our way to maintain this piece of property to its utmost. And maybe some of you have seen me out on our lawnmower, on the tractor, you know, week after week doing that. But we are, um, mindful, we are appreciative of this piece of property. We work very hard to keep it at the highest level possible. We have a tree guy coming in, um, within the next couple of weeks to take care of trees, which we can do probably every month. But, um, we're appreciative of your, of your consideration, but we worked with Close Johnson and Miller for over a year to try and come up with something that we think really would be the best for this neighborhood. Least intrusive, most attractive, and, and the most positive. So we're kind of blindsided by, um, a few of the comments, but, um, anyway, that, that, I think that's just about it, but thanks for your consideration.
Okay. Thanks very much. Anything else before we close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Right. Motion by Jim, second by George to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay. Um, I guess on this one, um, we'll seat all the regular members, so I would ask Peter and David to sit out. Um, does someone want to make a motion for, uh, purposes of starting discussion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve this application. I don't know the number of it. Sorry.
Twenty ninety-three, twenty-one Z. Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I don't have any conditions. Anybody want any, put any on it? I don't think there, I suggest any, but.
But I think clearly we would want to include satisfactory compliance with, um, the conditions contained in the memorandum from the town engineer dated today. Um, there are nineteen of them, um, and among those is the, the milling and repavement of Bittersweet Hill when it's done, uh, as well as the comments um, in Peter's memorandum dated September sixteenth, which specifically includes number eleven. Um, any approvals issued for re-subdivision should incorporate a condition that the town engineer must approve individual building permits and plans that incorporate a grading and drainage scheme, um, as illustrated in the subdivision plans prior to the issuance of building permit, um, and that the improvements must be installed prior to the issuance of a CO. And that specifically was intended to address the, the drainage runoff flow issues that the neighbors had, had raised. Um, I don't know whether anyone else has any proposed conditions, but I would, um, recommend those for, for George and Jim to consider adding as part of the motion.
Conditions are acceptable, Mr. Chairman, to me.
Fine with me.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, just one more. There are a series of agreements, um, terms and conditions that have to be satisfied for the rear lot access per the rear lot regulations, and those would also have to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a, uh, of a milar so that they run with the property. So that's the only other one I would highlight, at least from my, my correspondence.
How do you word it, uh, Peter?
Uh, it's basically, it's basically spelled out in, in my comment number twelve. So if you want to reference, uh, highlight number twelve as it relates to the, uh, rear lot agreements.
We'll make that a condition.
Yeah, I mean, ba- basically, I was incorporating all of them, but I, I mentioned specifically the, you know, the, the building plans one, but, um, required easements and agreements associated with both lots admitted to, approved and filed on the land records at the time they approved milars and filed with the town clerk.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any, um, suggested stipulations or comments or concerns? Going once? All right. Um, if not, the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, government.
Rich, before you start the next application, I have to be excused. Maybe you can pull all this pressure on Mr. Lamboni or Mr. Drake for me. I'll have to exit out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Tony. Take care.
To get them to think like you. Great.
I don't think we want that kind of pressure on them. Uh, next item, application three point, uh, item three point four, public hearing, application two oh nine four twenty-one Z. Uh, Charles M. Baldwin, Lot one eighty-one oh twenty-one, Farmstead and Griswold Road, re-subdivision and erosion and sediment control plan certification in accordance with section three seven and six six for the creation of two lots. Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, Kevin Johnson, Close Johnson and Miller.
Of all people.
Of all people. Um, Peter, if I could share a screen again?
I think you still have permission to do that. Yeah, give it a shot.
All right. Okay. So, again, um, just a quick orientation, uh, with the site. So, this is a parcel, uh, known as assessor's number one eighty-one, uh, oh two one. Uh, it's a parcel that has frontage on both, uh, Farmstead Road, uh, and, and Griswold, Farmstead being to the left, uh, Griswold to the right. Uh, direction north is to the top of the sheet. Uh, again, you can see it's a residential zone, um, pretty much surrounded by, uh, existing one-family, uh, residences. Uh, moving to the existing conditions plan. Uh, this is a parcel that contains approximately, uh, thirty-one thousand six hundred and ninety square feet or point seven plus or minus acres. Uh, it's located in the A-one residence zone. Um, it's, it's a lot that's predominantly, uh, clear of vegetation, grasses and so forth. Uh, you know, predominate the, the center of it. Um, the Farmstead end of the lot, there's, there's trees on the periphery, uh, on both sides, and north and the south. And, and then on the Griswold, uh, street end, there's some frontage trees, and, and there's, uh, two street trees, uh, in the town right-of-way. Uh, generally, the topography slopes, uh, again, from west to east or left to right. Uh, there's about a twenty-foot grade change, uh, across the parcel. Uh, there is existing, uh, utility systems in both Farmstead Road, uh, and Griswold Road. Uh, moving to the re-subdivision plan. Uh, so again, uh, the proposal is to subdivide this parcel into two lots. Uh, one frontage lot, uh, on Griswold and one frontage lot on Farmstead. Um, the Farmstead lot, uh, would have an acreage of approximately seventeen thousand uh, four hundred and ninety-nine square feet or point four acres. The Griswold Street Lot, uh, would have approximately fourteen thousand one ninety-one square feet or point three three acres. Uh, thirteen thousand five hundred, I believe, uh, is the minimum requirement. So we exceed both, uh, in square footage. Uh, in terms of side yard setbacks, uh, rear yard, front yard, coverages and so forth, uh, we meet or exceed all the zoning, uh, requirements. And there is a zoning table included on the plan, which documents all that. Uh, moving to the grading, uh, utilities plan. Uh, so again, as I mentioned, um, the property slopes from, from west to east or left to right. Uh, so we've located, a- again, these are schematic homes. They approximate, you know, say a two, uh, a colonial-style house with a two-car garage. Uh, the houses we indicate are about thirty-six, I believe, by, uh, twenty-eight or so. Um, so on the Farmstead Lot, uh, again, in terms of grading, uh, we've created a high point, uh, in the front yard and then created drainage swales uh, around both sides of the house, uh, converging again in a infiltration basin. Uh, again, uh, planted, uh, with native species. Uh, individual topsoil pile, uh, between the house and, and that basin. Uh, the Griswold Street Lot, similar condition, uh, basically doing some cutting to the rear of the, the home, uh, creating a high point, again, swales around both sides of the house. Uh, again, infiltration basins, uh, in the front yards, again, planted with native plants and grasses. Uh, the Griswold Street Lot, uh, because of the, the grade change, um, the garage would be one level down, uh, retaining wall built on the south side of the driveway and, and sidewalk and steps up to, uh, the house. Uh, this is a condition that exists similar grading treatment as a couple of the houses to the south. I think the, the, the abutting property to the south is maybe, you know, half a level, maybe a split-type level house. Uh, I, I believe the second one to the south has similar grading, uh, and, and differential a- as this. Uh, so, in terms of, um, site utilities, uh, the Farmstead Lot would connect to public water and sewer, uh, in Farmstead. Uh, there is an existing utility pole, uh, on the far side of Farmstead, so we'd be getting electric and telecom and so forth overhead, uh, for that home. Um, on the Farmstead Lot, as I mentioned, there are existing trees on the periphery in the rear corner. Uh, we went to great lengths to grade this lot to preserve all those existing trees, so they will all remain. Uh, on the Griswold Lot, again, there's, and, and I apologize, the trees, they're a little faint on this plan. Um, there's a couple in the rear yard. Uh, there's one in the northeast corner of the lot. Uh, there's a couple, uh, in the range with the rear of the house on the south lot line, uh, that we're preserving. The ones that are required to be removed are predominantly along the street frontage, uh, of Griswold, uh, to accommodate the grades and driveway. Um, there is one street tree, uh, that's impacted, um, that, by, by utilities and driveway that we're going to, uh, remove and we're proposing to replace, uh, with a new street tree, deciduous tree. Um, one thing I will mention is both of the trees in the town right-of-way along Griswold, uh, in, in my opinion, as, as you all know, I'm a landscape architect, not an engineer, but in my opinion, both of those trees are in poor health. The northerly one that we're proposing to remove, uh, it looks like at some point in the past, uh, you know, portion of the tree split, came down. In my opinion, not in very well health, good health. Uh, the other tree, it, we're proposing to retain that. Um, again, that's probably a tree the tree warden wants to look at. Uh, it's got significant crown dieback. Um, again, in my opinion, it's probably short on life and it's not going to last that long, but that's a determination for the tree warden to make. Again, in my opinion, it's probably short on life and it's not going to last that long, but that's a determination for the tree warden to make at some point in the future. But again, at this point, we're proposing to retain that existing tree. So against utilities for the Griswold Lot. Water, sewer, electric, all of that will be obtained from Griswold Road. We did do a sightline study on Griswold. So standing in the site driveway, looking north or looking left out of the driveway. We have a sightline distance of approximately one thousand four hundred and fifteen feet. Looking right or south out of the driveway, we have a sightline distance of about three hundred and forty-nine feet. Again, it's a thirty-five mile an hour speed zone. Our, our calculations and determination indicate. That those sightlines are adequate for thirty-five mile an hour speed zone. We are asking for erosion and sedimentation certification. Again, the heavy black dotted lines, they represent silt fencing around the perimeter of the site as well as around the individual stockpiles. On the Griswold Lot, we have silt fencing along the property line. Except for a break where the driveway is, and again, because there's grading work, regrading the sidewalk, we have an additional row of silt fencing within the town right of way. We've got the construction, stone construction entrances for both lots. The erosion narrative indicating the installation and maintenance of the erosion controls. Seedbed preparation, seed mixtures and so forth. So again, we are in receipt of staff comments. The fire marshal endorsed the plan, had no comments, adequate for fire access. Planning. There was. A handful of comments. One comment that I would like to discuss with the commission, which we disagree with, is planning asked to have an iron pin set. And that's where the cursor is on the screen right now. This is at a property line between two abutting lots. Now, this is an existing condition which has existed since these houses were built. It has no bearing on the two lots that we're creating. I did discuss this with Mr. Gillespie, explained to him that for us to set an iron pin at that property corner. We would have to do additional field survey on the two abutting lots. We did not feel it was a fair request to pin a lot for two abutting lots. You know, that that would be extra expense and so forth on our client, so. I, I would ask the commission for relief on that one comment made by planning. Again, engineering, we're in receipt of town engineer comments. Again, there was nothing substantial that we took exception to. And, and we will work with staff to incorporate. All their comments on revised plans. Again, we did not receive comments. You know, until late last week and, and just did not have time to respond with. New plans for, for distribution to the commission for this evening, but again, I'll reiterate, we're, we're. Fully going to address these comments and, and work with staff, but we, we take no exception other than that one. Iron pin that I discussed. And with that, I will.
Um, just, just so that I'm clear, because the cursor movement was kind of. Not coinciding with your narrative.
Okay.
The iron pin location that you disagree with. Is the one in the middle of the boundary.
Right where the cursor is now.
Why are you requiring it? I mean, why are you putting it in? I mean, wouldn't the, the property owner put that in?
Well, again, as, as I said, we're, we're creating a new lot line between. The Farmstead Lot and the Griswold Lot, and we're going to pin that new corner that intersects that southerly line. But what planning.
This is, this is a few feet to the east.
That's correct, and, and that's what I am asking the commission for relief from that comment. As I said, that's an existing lot line. I mean, we, we show a line there just to indicate that there's two different properties. But for us to put an iron pin on that southerly property line, a few feet away from the new lot line. We would have to do additional field survey on those two abutting properties. And we did not feel it was a fair request for our client to go to additional expense. For survey work and to install an iron pin on two neighboring lots, a, a common point between two neighboring lots. So, so.
I would agree, and that, that was done only a few years ago, that, that adjoining property, and the pin should have been put in then. I agree. And why can't, Peter, why can't you go back to the previous property owner and tell him to put a pin in the corner of his lot? That was a corner.
Yeah, that, that's not the nature of what we do going backwards. If, if it should have been done at a point in time, it should have been done at a point in time. I have no objection to you guys. After Kevin explained to me the complication required to locate that pin, I, I have no objection to that.
Oh.
Okay. All right.
Peter, I'm curious, what, what was your thinking in asking for that?
It's so close to the new property line that it's likely the neighbor will probably think that that other pin that they place for the rear lot line is his property line. And it's only a few feet off, so I'm just, it was, the intent was to avoid any future confusion amongst the property owners as to where exactly that rear property line was.
Okay.
Actually, it make, make more confusion because people will flip them when they want to. The western guy will think you have a bigger lot and the eastern guy will think he has a bigger lot.
That's why they put up fences.
They better not. They, they better do a survey. That's what they better do if that becomes a problem.
Yes. All right. Kevin, was that, was that your entire presentation or is there more?
No, I think that concludes my comments at this point. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Kevin, how about the fire station? The turns of the fire station are not a problem for this site?
The, the turns?
Well, any turns there, they're, they're pretty close there, aren't they?
They're a little farther south. I, I don't think there's going to be conflict with driveways.
Sorry. It's all right then. Okay.
Yeah.
Do you really think that tree should be removed by you guys if you think it's bad? That street tree?
The one that we're calling to remain?
Yeah.
Well, again, in, in my opinion, it's got crown dieback. I'm not saying it's dead right now, but. You know, it's, it's not in a healthy condition. But we, we, we didn't want to propose taking more down than we had to.
Well, you save the applicant money, but the point is that I think it ought to go myself if it's bad. I'm not saying you got to replace it either, but. At least take it down.
Okay. The, the other thing I will add, I, I believe both species are Norway maples, which, you know, at one time, they were a great street tree, but now they're considered invasive, so.
Hey, Kevin, I had two of them in my yard. And they had, they came down eventually, and guess what was in the center of them? They were rotten.
Yeah.
They were Norwegian maples, both of them.
Yeah.
I don't trust those trees.
All right. Does anyone else have any question?
I just have clarification, Kevin. Can, can you show me again which tree you're replacing there in the front?
It, it's, it, right there where the cursor is, there's an existing one. There's an arrowhead that points to the center, a, a dot. And, and then the proposed tree is the heavy dark one just to the side. And the reason we're removing that northerly tree is to accommodate grading for this drive and lowering of the sidewalk.
Okay. I got it.
Now, you'll replace it, right?
We're replacing that with, with a new maple, but a different maple.
Okay, good.
Just for the record, that will require the action of the shade tree commission, so there will need to be a, a process. To, to get that posted for the tree warden to inspect it and for him to, the commission to actually act on that. So he may at the same time take a look at that other tree and make some decisions on that as well.
Okay.
These, uh, these roads are all town roads, right? So Griswold is a town road as well as Farmstead, right?
Correct, yep.
So any repairs that are done for connection to the utilities are going to be per town requirements, I assume?
And per MDC requirements, yes.
Correct, and I believe we have details and notes to that effect.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Kevin? If not, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this application? Yes, I have a, a comment. My name's. Yeah, I was just going to ask, could you let us know your name and address for the record, please? Yep, my name's Chris Coe. I'm at one fifty-one Griswold Road. Quote, shake spirit, brevity is the soul of wit. It's getting late and I won't keep you here long. I know that, um, I'd like to just cut and paste some of the discussion from the maze. Into this discussion as to drainage. We heard Mr. Johnson talk about the twenty-degree. Change in grade from Farmstead to Griswold. My house was built in eighteen seventy-four and I'm right to the north of the proposed lot too. And I, I just like to remind everybody that, you know, my house was built in eighteen seventy-four. And from what I understand, these two lots were one-time connected to my lot. And my house is very sensitive, as a lot of historic homes are in Weathersfield, to any sort of moisture change. And I think, you know, the last couple of years, we're seeing for whatever reason, a change in climate and a change, things seem to be getting wetter. So, you know, I, I, just for the record, I, I just want to say that I don't have any objection to what the Baldwins are doing. Some of the family still lives next door to me and I know Charlie Baldwin, I've met him, very nice people. I hope they get a lot of money for their lots. And, and somebody builds nice homes next to mine. It's just, I'd like the town to just keep in mind that. Whenever the developer decides to build these lots, that, you know, we just take into mind my poor eighteen seventy-four foundation. I just don't want to have a, you know, an indoor swimming pool in my basement, so I just want, you know, that on the record. And I, I just have, will leave my trust in the town of Weathersfield and Mr. Johnson to make sure that that doesn't happen. No, thank you very much. And, and I guess in the spirit of cutting and pasting, the, the, the same stipulation that was put on the. May approval regarding. Town engineer approving any individual building permits and plans, including. Grading and drainage schemes to make sure that there are no adverse off-site impacts. On your property as well as some specific recommendations from the town engineer and his memo dated the seventeenth. You know, designed to or intended to make sure that the infiltration basins and, and the onsite drainage proposals. Work as intended are also things that. I would anticipate that we will include as stipulations in our approval this evening. Perfect, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to comment on this application? If not, could we stop? I guess last call for any commission questions for Kevin? If not, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. Second by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the hearing's closed. Tony has left, so that leaves us needing one alternate. I asked Dave to sit out the first time, so this time I'll ask Peter to sit out and I will seat David. Break. Does someone want to make a motion on this application to start discussion?
Motion, motion to pass. I don't have the number in front of me and whatever conditions you want to put on.
A blank check motion from Jim.
You got it. Just to get it rolling, boys.
That was fantastic. That's the best. I didn't realize it was that easy.
I don't have a headset and I don't have a fancy chair or a mic.
Somebody's jealous.
Tom?
Mr. Chair? I would move to amend that, that motion to include the conditions that are. That are mentioned in the memorandum from the town planner. And any other conditions that may have been provided by the town engineer relative to this application. Except for the deletion of that particular, you know, proposed qualification or condition. That the town planner included in his memorandum regarding that particular iron pin. To deduct that iron pin from the, the conditions, but include the, the other. Part of the conditions.
Okay, so. Jim made the motion. I'll, I'll take your comments as a second with conditions. That we include everything in, in Peter's memo other than item three under site plan comments as well as. The, the comments in Derek's memo of September seventeenth.
All good.
It's all good with Jim? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Okay, take care. Uh, next item, number four, other business. I see nothing. Five minutes, there's nothing. Six, staff reports. Peter, do you have any?
Just, just a, just a couple of minor things. The, this year's salute to business, which is done by the EDIC, has been moved up early. We're doing it on October twentieth, and it's going to be on the deck, the outside deck of the River Restaurant at one hundred Great Meadow. So if you want to put that on your calendar, save the date, please do that. And then secondly, we are doing the final inspection certificate of occupancy for the Chase Bank project tomorrow. So that is nearing completion as, as we speak, so take a look at that project. I think it turned out, turned out very well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And does anybody have any questions for Peter? All right, next item is public comments on general matters of planning and zoning. The non-correspondence, the quarterly newsletter from the Aquaturf Ziti Society. Was included in our, our packets. And. We have a. Lengthy list of upcoming pending applications to be heard at future meetings that have generated a great deal of. Chatter on Facebook and elsewhere.
Yes.
Not the least of which is why isn't Trader Joe's on here? Two hundred and eightieth consecutive. Not the least of which is, why isn't Trader Joe's on here, you know, for the two hundred and eightieth consecutive month, but, uh.
Uh, so three out of those, three out of those five will be on the next agenda, and then the other two will be on the, uh, October nineteenth, so we're spreading them out a little bit.
Okay, good. No, and it's, it's encouraging to see activity, um. All right, does anyone else have anything else? Um, anyone have anything else that, that they wanna discuss, um, before we call it a night? If not, someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion by Tom, second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. All right, thanks very much. Appreciate everyone's endurance and patience.
See you guys.
Okay, everyone.
Good evening.
Take care.
Good night. Good meeting.